May we have a roll call for the City Council?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
And the Housing Authority, please.
Authority members Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Mincy.
Here.
Brazian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Can we have your report?
The agenda for the December 11th, 2012, joint public meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority was postponed on Thursday, December 6, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Mr. Ochoa.
If I can read the item into the record.
Okay, please.
Director of Community Development regarding Small Lot Subdivision Initiation at One A is Council Motion Providing Direction to Staff on Options for Implementing an Ordinance.
We have a rather interesting and although not unique idea to bring before you as a zoning and land use tool, particularly in our medium and high-density neighborhoods that might facilitate the achievement of a number of community development goals. And so Laura Stotler, our, not senior planner, principal planner.
Yes.
Yes, will be giving you the presentation.
Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, Council, Housing Authority staff. We are asking to initiate a small lot subdivision ordinance today. We're here as a result of council request in February. We had received a request from our DRB Chairman, Art Simonian, to take a look at small lot ordinances in Los Angeles and see how they might be applicable in Glendale. And so that's what we've done. Small lot ordinances in LA occurred in 2004. That's when they passed an ordinance to create these. And what they are is lots that are smaller than their surrounding or are a typical multifamily-zoned lot. What they allow for are single-family developments essentially within multifamily zones. Having flexibility of a small lot allows you to adapt to site constraints such as narrow frontages. It also allows you to develop a couple of different product types that are typical townhouse or rose house style housing and also single-family housing style. However, the big difference between a typical single family is, would be a yard size. This is what a typical one looks like. You'll see they mirror single-family homes, multifamily homes. The maltman bungalows are the ones that look like single family, although they are attached. What really makes them unique is that they are separate lots, separate land ownership. Although they are separate structures, they appear to be connected. Kind of similar to the commercial project that we have across the street from us where we have Ralphs. If you go and drive around and look at, especially at the top deck of that, you'll see that there's plates that physically separate the property. Although it appears to be one structure, it's multiple ones. This is the same situation.
May I ask?
Yes.
Back one. Those two cars, is there enough room to get in and out?
Yes. They do have some back, it's tight. They do have backing distance, but they are tight.
I think we ought to allow a couple more feet if you do this.
Well, I'll go into a little bit to the maltman bungalows. They actually have a unique situation. But here's an example of what a small lot map looks like. You typically see condominium plans. I know you've seen a number of those. And the difference is on condominium plan, you'll see a number of units, but they're on a single lot. In this case, they each have individual lots. And those dotted lines show the individual lot lines. And as you can see, here's three different examples of different types of lotting that you would see. In our typical case, we see one rectangular lot. And here you can see there's flexibility to address some design constraints, perhaps to topography, existing development.
And it's not uncommon in these types of planned unit developments to see, you know, the two-car garage, 1,200 to 1,500 square feet of living space. And so you're able to give a small to medium-sized homeownership opportunity in a neighborhood that might today not have that same level of opportunity because it is primarily dominated by rentals.
So at this time, we allow townhomes, however, we don't allow this? Is that what our code says?
What we allow are condominiums. Condominiums are airspace development, so it's one lot with multiple units.
What about the townhouse? I understand the condominium condominium kind of goes up, but the townhouse is more, yeah, is more, it looks more like it's on a per-lot basis, which is not.
That's not the case in Glendale. When you see a development that looks like a townhouse, it's a condominium, where they might be built to look like individual homes, and they certainly are. I mean, they have individual airspace.
It's not like this. Each lot, each, let's say, each townhouse does not have its own lot. Is that correct?
Correct. The difference, the difference is, and these light lines here, these are physical lot lines. This is a physically different property. So we would consider this, for instance, it's a tract map because you'd be creating more than four lots, individual-owned lots. What you see typically in Glendale is that we'll have a lot like this, and this will be one lot.
Right.
And then all these units will be sharing the same lot. It's an airspace development.
What are the advantages and the disadvantages? I don't know if you're going to address that, but...
I will, I'll go through those. So here's where we talk about small lot innovations and the ability to have some flexibility. Whereas typically, we would see, in our past developments here, we see one lot. Here you see a variety of lots. So one, two, three, four, five, six different lots. All individual ownership, all individual units, they're, these are single-family. They're not, or they're, they're single-dwelling units. They're not multifamily. Although they are located in multifamily neighborhoods, and that's one of the characteristics of LA's ordinance, they're all within multifamily districts. One of the other things I want to point out is the way they get their access is through easement. So to get in here, this is why it looks like a typical multifamily development that we have here. Easements are what we use to control the access rather than single ownership of a lot.
Question?
In the middle?
Yes.
Multi one?
Yes.
Are they no, no yard at all, right?
There's a variety of options for yards. I have some examples I'll show you. But the, there is a big difference between a typical single-family house, which has a yard, and a small lot ordinance in which they don't have to have a yard.
But they can.
They can, but they don't have to. In fact, frequently, they'll have other open spaces. They'll have larger patios, or they'll have roof decks, but they can have a yard too. They can have inner courtyards as well. So some of the advantages, again, it really comes down to the land. People own their piece of land. They don't own a lot in common. That's the biggest difference in terms of what you would see in a small lot versus a condominium, typical condominium. In Glendale, we would not propose any changes to the zoning densities because we already have zoning densities that are identified, and we have no minimum lot size in our code. But what we do have is a requirement for subdivision to look at the average lot size in the area. Since our average lot sizes are much greater than what the small lots are, there's not an opportunity to subdivide at this time to create a small lot. Also, there's some big homeownership advantages to having a small lot development because people will actually own their own land. It's a housing choice that some people are looking for. Banks will loan on those. People do have a piece of land that they can secure. There's also no homeowners association, a condo association like you would have. You're also not, these lots aren't subject to a lot of the state laws related to common interest developments that you have with a typical condominium. They also provide a housing price point that's attractive to our workforce housing. For instance, in studios and people in the entertainment industry, we've found that they tend to gravitate toward this product.
And considering the number of rental units that we're building, particularly in the downtown core, it's nice to have an alternative that is equally affordable for those young working families in the area surrounding that urban core.
Did you say there is no, what do you call it, annual fee for...
No, because you own, you own the lot.
Well, what control would you have of the other homes in your tract if one, for instance, doesn't keep his property up?
They're generally controlled through easements. They can also have covenants, conditions, and restrictions like you have on other housing developments. What you don't have is the condo association.
Thank you.
And there's also a potential for historic preservation on some of these units. And that's what we showed, the one that had the small parking. That was the maltman bungalows because it was an existing auto court that was constructed in the 20s. And you can see from the aerial view, you have a number of individual units that are connected through, they're individual units, but you do have a, essentially, a metal plate that connects them. But they are standalone units, individually owned. But they were converted because they wanted to preserve the historic character. So in that case, they have reduced parking. They do not have two parking, enclosed parking spaces per unit. But in exchange, they have other advantages in that they're preserving historic structures. I believe this one just opened on the weekend and sold out in LA. They're very popular. These, when they're at the right price point, they sell very quickly because they are desirable units. A lot of times, people can't afford a typical single-family home. They can afford one of these, and it is single-family. In response to finding out what the yards look like, this is a sample of a small lot development that's in Atwater. We have very small, we have some small yards. We also have interior courtyards. Didn't come out, it's hard to see this, but this is a glass wall inside. People can open it, and that's their outdoor patio.
Is it a common area, or it's...
No, all these, there are no common areas at all. These are all private patios or private yards. Roof decks are also quite common.
Is that the Atwater Muse project?
Yes, that is Atwater Muse.
It's a nice project, I've been there.
I've heard about it. Do you know the address?
It's right across from Atwater Crossing. It's between Fletcher and, what's the next street to the south?
No, it's behind...
No, it's between Glendale and Fletcher, behind the tracks.
Behind the tracks, yeah, behind the Costco.
Press, but some of them Google it.
If you can get me the...
Oh, I believe I have, I have it on the, actually, when I think of it, I think I have it on the, as an attachment to the staff report.
Which one?
Atwater Muse.
And certainly, if the council gives direction for us to prepare an ordinance, what we would do is organize field trips and tours, self-guided, or if you'd want staff to go with you, to go and take a look at these different projects.
Yes.
The yard to the right is indicative of a number of the planned unit developments and small lot. Enough for...
A small dog.
A small dog, enough for a small swing, enough for, you know, a little tyke to be outside. So again, it's just another tool for us as we build these neighborhoods. And as Laura indicated, I mean, if the price point median housing for homeownership opportunities is hovering around $500,000 to $600,000, these are going for, you know, two-thirds of that amount. So it still gives that opportunity for homeownership and investment in a place, in a neighborhood.
Although, isn't Atwater Muse pretty expensive? I mean, they're not...
They can be. You know, they certainly can be.
Yeah, Atwater Muse is located at 4254 to 4300 Perleto Avenue. And there are disadvantages. It is more building and less open space. They use easements.
As opposed to a condo, or...
As opposed to a typical single-family residence. Typical, single...
Is that what we're comparing it to, or are we comparing it to condos?
Well, it's really, it's really its own product. That's what makes it unique.
Let me ask the question in terms of density. In terms of density, the lots that we're talking about, in terms of density, you said we're not making any changes to the density.
Correct.
So I, should we compare this to multifamily buildings as opposed to single-family homes, or...
You can...
You don't feel the question on, it's not...
I think so. And I think it's a good question because when you, I would compare it to both. When you're comparing it to a product type, I would compare it to multifamily, to higher density because that's where it's really going to be located.
Right.
When you compare it to, to the use, then I would compare it to single-family because it is that homeownership opportunity for somebody. So it's a little bit of both. It's kind of a hybrid type of tool. The issue of density is interesting because what you can see, especially in a built-out city like ours, as Laura's talking about, this would be an infill tool. Folks who might otherwise, especially as land prices recover and housing recovers, might come into a built-out neighborhood and want to buy two or three properties, tie them together and put an apartment building or a condominium there. Well, they can realize, that developer, that investor can realize a decent premium, a fair premium, on their land, on that investment, but doing less density because of what the, what the project is. So I think there are many, many opportunities for success, but we do want to be fair in saying, you know, here are some of the things that people who would argue against this might say.
But we're only talking about doing this in multifamily areas. So Mr. Manukian's right. We should really be only looking at multifamily, not at single-family. Because even though these are technically single-family, they're not going to, I don't think they're going to make less open space in our multifamily areas. They're going to do the opposite because they will give an incentive to build less dense units because it's homeownership and people want, they want that.
It would have an easing effect on the pressure for density.
And in terms of a comparison with multifamily, because these are individual units on individual lots, there is no guest parking requirement like we have with multifamily. Again, less density than allowable under zoning permissions typically. And what it really requires is a lot of resident cooperation because they operate through easements. There's not a, they don't own the lot in common. Everybody owns an individual lot. So there's advantages and disadvantages to that.
And how has that been working in Los Angeles? Because they've had this for a number of years now.
We found that...
I mean, I know, I've seen a lot of these projects, and they do tend to be less dense than the multifamily buildings that are built around them by a lot. I mean, they're much less dense, but they seem to be more successful. But how is that working with the neighbor relationships? Are people getting along for the most part?
We haven't heard any concerns with that, partly because the people who are attracted to this type of development are looking for an urban, an urban living situation, and this is definitely urban living. This is higher density than you would see in a typical single-family house. Like we said, it's really a different housing choice.
And in my experience, the factor of homeownership makes a world of difference in how folks get along because they're not, they're, you know, they give their first and last months and they get out. I mean, these are folks who are vested.
In terms of what's available for multifamily infill, this just comes from our housing element. An R3050, we think of those as duplex. We have 372 lots that are under the current density is allowed. You have, our 2250 is perhaps the greatest ability to, for someone to build a small lot in terms of availability of lots that don't meet our density. And then our 1250, that's our high-density residential. So while we have more capacity for additional dwelling units, those may be ones that are more attractive to condominiums than a single, than a small lot development. However, at this time, we would propose that all of our multifamily areas be looked at in terms of a study for, should we do a small lot ordinance? So today, we are recommending that our council initiate creating a small lot ordinance and also creating small lot design guidelines that go along with the ordinance. We think they go hand in hand. We're also looking at recommending that you initiate a zoning and subdivision modification study to make sure that not only can we allow the subdivisions to occur, but that they could actually build them under our codes without having any issues. We know LA had a number of issues. We can build on their experience and hopefully modify our codes to streamline the development process for small lots. That concludes the staff's presentation.
In the previous slide where you had the basically duplex and triplex type of zoning, the 50, you're basically saying that if we went in this direction, you still wouldn't have more than two units or three units on the lot? That it wouldn't become more intense?
Right, well, our zoning for our 3050, for instance, if you have a typical lots in Glendale around between 5,000 and 7,500 square feet, that's typical. So if you're in an R3050 zone with a 5,000-square-foot lot, you would not be able to create a small lot if, depending on what our minimum lot size would be because you wouldn't be able to meet the density. However, if you have a 7,500-square-foot lot in the R3050 zone, you could potentially build two, two small lots. And so we would be looking at corresponding increase in density. But we're not looking at making any changes overall to what our density category would be or to the number...
And the 2250, generally, how many units would you find in a...
For our 2250, you would typically, in a 5,000-square-foot lot, you'd be looking at two units, and on a 7,500-square-foot lot, potentially three for small lot development. And some of our larger zones, we do have an ability to increase density by having a larger lot. So if it's, when you have 90 feet of frontage, we actually do get a density bump. And I forget exactly how. I believe it's an additional unit under each of those, those three zones, R2250, R1650, and R1250.
In those same zones, though, you could build a lot, you could build more. If you were building an apartment building, you could put a lot more units than two and three. Because you could do a two-story, three-story building.
Right, our density bonus that we have for lot width is encouraged to, it's designed to encourage people to combine lots so we don't have what I think of as an orphan lot. But where the small lot ordinance really has a lot of power is you can take an orphan lot that really hasn't been ignored and make it have some economic value to somebody can come in and redevelop that lot in those neighborhoods and hopefully create an ownership opportunity.
Right, so this can reduce density because if your height is in this neighborhood, what would your typical heights be allowed? Or number of floors?
Well, we wouldn't be changing any of our heights of the floor. So you're looking at, I believe it's 35 feet, and you can have additional height.
How many floors is that?
With a pitched roof, three floors.
So if you were to do an apartment building with three floors, on each section, you would have three units, one on top of the other, but with the small lot subdivision, you could always only have one.
Correct.
If you own the ground. So that would, right there, reduce the density quite a bit.
Okay.
That was going to be one of my, I'll go to you, Mr. Weaver. That was going to be one of my questions, too. In terms of the units are built, and a couple of years later, one of the homeowners wants to save their single story, wants to add a second story. They'd be allowed to do that? How would that type of thing work?
It would depend on how they, they condition themselves. If they put covenants, conditions, and restrictions, they would need to have an agreement among them.
Would the zoning allow?
The zoning would allow them to modify it. Subject, yeah, subject to Design Review Board approval.
And to the conditions, I mean, that's why the initiation process is so important. We would look at, at those types of future design guidelines. We'd look at parking requirements. And also say, okay, well, the parking requirements for subdivisions are different than maybe what this needs to be. So all of that would come back to you in a comprehensive view.
Mr. Weaver, then Mr. Najarian.
I assume if we tell you to go ahead with this, there are areas in Glendale that you would be suggesting, in a broad scope, to do this in. Because my mind, there's certain sections of the city, they just wouldn't be appropriate. Do, is that a true statement?
We would, we could definitely bring back a variety of options. We could look at where we think there's opportunity sites. If you wanted to do a pilot study, we'd be open to that. If you wanted to have some sort of parameters of parking availability, open space, whatever your requirements would be, we would take a look at that. But we would come back, I think, we would definitely come back with a variety of options for you to consider and get your direction.
What I'm getting, you wouldn't go up on the single-family house of north...
No, no, this would only be multifamily.
Wherever there's a multifamily up there, I'd try to do it. You would.
Wherever that zone exists is what we'd be looking at. So, I mean, and there are a number of neighborhoods that are but multifamily and single-family.
Yeah, I just wonder what the public reaction will be if you start to try to do this in that area. But, well, no until you give us one.
Well, weren't you saying that the density would be less if you did this in a multifamily?
Yes, the effect of density is quite a bit less usually.
It'll be education of the public.
Certainly, it's a very comprehensive and complex set of requirements. There's no two ways about it.
Mr. Najarian.
I'm not so sure about the density. What... I think Glendale clearly is one of the most densest, parts of Glendale are some of the most densest in the nation. I think that this ordinance gives additional potential value to a developer by creating single-family residences. My concern is that, and we see them, there's a few homes in all of our multifamily zones where the owners either refuse to sell or the construction of multifamily, traditional condos or apartments was not economically feasible. I'm concerned that what this is going to do now is make it economically feasible for the last remaining holdouts of single-family homes amidst the morass of multifamily dwelling, along with all the parking issues and all the other problems, to be converted into these small lot individual homes.
That is definitely a policy decision. From one standpoint, one could say that if your policy is to preserve those lone, leftover multifamily homes amidst the multifamily zones...
Single-family homes.
It's, single-family homes amidst the multifamily development, then maybe the preservation of that would be the direction of your policy. However, we would caution that at some point, somebody is going to either take those lone pieces or combine them with existing multifamily residential zone next to them, demolish everything, and come up with denser development. And there's nothing to prevent them from doing that. This will at least allow them to take an existing single-family home and create fewer units than would otherwise be done if combined with the adjacent lots.
I do think, though, for many of those areas, there has been downzoning.
Correct.
So I, for one, would be happy, I mean, the demolition of any existing, how do you describe them, Soviet-era?
Soviet-style.
Soviet-style apartments, which were flourishing in the 1970s and 1980s, to be demolished and built to our new standards, less dense. And I think we have more parking requirements, we have more open space. For me, I'm, I would not object to that. But I, my ultimate fear is that the few homes that we have amidst these multifamily apartments would now be ripe for picking. It makes sense, and they'll be snapped up. And whether they're individually owned or part of, you know, shared walls or whatever, that they will be gone. And it will, especially with no guest parking, it will increase some of the density problems that we have. That's my, that's just one of my concerns. I, but, but tell me this, why, how is this different from just having a condominium?
Well...
Less dense, for one thing.
It's definitely less dense. And a condominium project could be multi-level. Could each level have separate condominiums. This would by necessity require each home to stand alone on its own footprint. And there is a limit to which people can go in to make, to densify this. That's why typically, these are less dense than condominium projects. And then, of course, we hear it all over and again that the association is the biggest problem, the biggest obstacle to people moving into condos. Once that association obstacle is gone and people get to own their own lot, there's more of a likelihood that they will actually...
Right, I don't disagree with the homeowners association that has...
Well, and also financing. Certainly, at this point in the market, financing is extremely difficult for a number of reasons in condominium-type.
If I may address the issue that Councilman Najarian, you mentioned. I, you know, I think it would be very optimistic, and I would be with you in that if some of the 70s and 80s multifamily units would be eliminated and would be...
Soviet-style.
Soviet-style.
Catch right.
I do think that, however, the ones that you would see disappear would be the 20s and 30s garden buildings that would, that right now are really developed with fewer units than even the current downzone zoning allows. And then would be connected with, say, a lone, single-family home next to them. The whole thing would be demolished, and brand-new condominiums could come in their place. This would at least keep that at bay up to a point.
Do you have a survey? Have you done a survey of potential lots that would be likely, that would likely take advantage of the small lot ordinance if it were to be passed?
We did that. When we did the multifamily analysis, do you remember, a few years back, we did a complete citywide survey. And then we made an assumption that any property that had, did we say 30% or more, potential to add 30% or more density to the lot would be likely to redevelop at some point. We did a citywide survey, and we identified the 21 areas in the city that were most likely to take advantage of that, and you downzoned all of those. So whatever is left over is going to be people who might be removing existing older stock housing to replace it with new stock housing.
How about the setback requirements? Are those going to be waived, or are those still in...
Those are some of the standards that we would need to study. In general, with like LA's ordinance, they've kept the front setback the same from the streets so you don't notice that it's a small lot. Where they've modified, their standards have been with open space. They've modified standards for side setbacks, or for, or interior setbacks. So we would be coming to you with a package of a variety of options for setback and other, other standards modifications.
And when this is well-executed, it is difficult to tell between a traditional single-family neighborhood and something that, again, is more or less a hybrid between that, you know, 5,000-square-foot, 7,500-square-foot type of lot and something that's much more dense, like the ones you were pointing out.
So you've referenced a handful of small lot projects.
Yes.
Are there any more than a handful that have actually gone forward in LA? Or are these just the most famous orbit?
Well, all throughout...
All throughout LA, they have small lots that are allowed. In fact, they're working on their different community standards as they go... on their different community standards. As they go through the different community plans, they add different small-lot developments throughout LA.
Really, it's not very unique. It's just been unique here, I think, because of the existing zoning requirements that we have, where there is no minimum lot size, and because the value of land has been such that it made sense to build subterranean, semi-subterranean, and thus densify a neighborhood. So if we have an alternative, there's no guarantee that somebody won't densify the way that you've described. And I've seen that happen, too. But at least you're giving that investor the opportunity to take a perhaps more practical and even safer route to a similar yield.
In terms of one of Mr. Najarian's comments about losing single-family homes rather than sort of larger apartments, is there something, and I'll turn to the city attorney also, is there something that we could come up with that would somehow make it more difficult to convert a single-family home versus an apartment unit that's just a big square box that financially may not be quite what the investor had in mind? Is there something that we could do along those lines, or?
Members of the city council, I'm thinking along the lines of some things that Laura already mentioned, and that is that we'd be looking at the development standards that would disincentivize that type of conversion that I think we're worried about. But we could also put some thought into other types of restrictions. This is new to us. So we'll be looking at what other jurisdictions have done and as a means of protecting from that sort of, you know, conversion from taking place.
An example that I would give you would be looking at historic stock. If you have an old, small house on a large, old lot, what may end up happening, what I've seen happen, is you get folks that will buy, bless you, a couple of properties, tie them together, take out the two historic homes, and put in four small-lot subdivision. So if we have some requirement that we take that into consideration, we can build in that kind of safeguard to make sure that this isn't just a one-size-fits-all type of tool, but something that has all of our different sensitivities in mind.
Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, I guess something like this would really be good in the southern part of Glendale, where we have a lot of old housing stock and not that quality level. Code enforcement, we used to send down there all the time and check on the units. But that housing stock is getting old, and eventually it'll have to come down anyhow. This would be a prime place to start rebuilding.
It is a good housing tool in that respect, where you can zero in on properties that have been problematic or neglected, and not change the overall character or fabric of a neighborhood, but change just that problem piece and be much more surgical in how you address a problematic neighborhood.
We see so many of these condos, three stories-
Sure.
High-end stuff. And with this, probably two stories max we'd see. So if you bring it down, you don't see that massing.
Okay. Any other comments, Mr. Menucha?
Well, I'm certainly interested. I think we should move forward with it. The thing that interests me the most is the issue of the lesser, where it- what it encourages lesser density, as opposed to having a three- or a four-story condo. As opposed to that, we're gonna have one unit. Even if that homeowner adds another story on the unit, they're not having more density. Maybe, you know, they're adding more space, but not necessarily two, three more families that are coming to live there. So I think that's certainly encouraging, and I am in favor of it. I just think that it's a product that we hadn't had here in Glendale. It makes sense. And some of the kids, Glendale kids, that are growing up in Glendale, who want to come back and live in Glendale after college, I think this is a great product for them. And Mr. Quintero was mentioning it as well, that this would be a great product for, you know, young individuals who are upstarts, and they will live in the downtown area, or they will bike to work or walk to work. I think this would be a great product. So I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Friedman.
Also, I completely agree. And also, I don't think we can underestimate the effect on some of these neighborhoods if we encourage this homeownership. You have neighborhoods now, like our neighborhoods in the south are primarily rentals, and you start mixing in privately-owned, not just units, but privately-owned properties, you know, the grounds themselves, that's gonna have a tremendously invigorating and positive effect on that area as people have that pride of ownership and that want, that desire to protect their investment. I don't think you're gonna have the code enforcement issues that you have with an apartment building. In fact, I'm sure of it. And I have seen these around Los Angeles, and I've been in several of them. And they do tend to be not just less dense, but they tend to be, because people are buying them, you know, and they're for sale and they own the property, too, they tend to be really nice. They tend to be built like custom homes, where they're really trying to attract people to, you know, to spend the money. And they do feature a very innovative use of open space. I've seen a lot of them with the patios, with courtyards, because they are so constrained with their open space outdoors, they create their own open spaces. So I do- I'm absolutely in favor of it, and I'm sure that the planning department can come up with a- an ordinance that addresses the concerns that we've expressed, while at the same time, you know, addressing that goal of giving a product that will be less dense, but that offers all of the advantages of homeownership for people who couldn't otherwise afford or who don't want a typical single-family house in an R1R district. So I'm glad to see you come forward, and thanks for the very clear and very illuminating report.
Thanks. And we would also, just to add, we would also make sure that we address the parking standards in our subdivision ordinance.
And fees, too. Let's look at the fees, because I think there's some profit that the city should share in by permitting this sort of thing. I don't know what the fees are for a lot division, but let's just review those and see what- I don't know what they are, but let's see what they are.
Mr. Weaver, just wanted to add at this time of year, one small thing. My daughter's family has a townhouse in Glendale. They have a small Christmas tree inside. They can't hang anything outside. It's wall-to-wall, whatever. These, you can do things outside, like hanging Christmas tree ornaments. That's just one example of what you could do with a little house like this. More privacy and more capability of doing things around it, planting, hanging lights.
Well, it makes sense. It's certainly more flexible. And, excuse me, the fact that they own the lot, the land, I think is a big thing. Because a condo is a different thing completely. A person owns the land, and the home are gonna take care of that much better than a condo or other property. I think it's a good idea to check this out more for- like you to go forward, is what I'm saying.
It's easier than having the electrical or the water lines go out, getting bill due on apartments, and you have common walls, associations trying to navigate through all that. Got a problem in your little unit, stands alone, you own the land, you can fix it.
And having small backyards. The kids can play in their own backyards after coming from school. So that is good exercise and healthy lifestyle to me.
And that one picture of the two cars. If you had a Mini Cooper, that would be much easier.
Yeah.
Two MG.
Don't drive an SUV in there. You gotta make sure there's enough room.
I generally support the concept, but I do think we have to be very exact in what we draw up, because I don't think one-size-fits-all is going to necessarily work. I think what we'll see is a lot of single-family homes that will be converted over. And so I just think we have to come up with just, you know, be very precise. And I know the staff is capable of doing that. And really put, to my way of thinking, the ideal would be to get rid of rental boxes and hopefully go in this direction. And then, second, in terms of maybe extra fees, this for sure, this concept for sure will impact not only parking, but it will impact parks and the schools. Because I think most of the people that buy this are either gonna be young couples, or maybe even young singles that eventually marry. So unlike some of the downtown housing that we're building, which are basically rentals right in the downtown, I don't envision too many families moving in. In this particular case, it will. So I think an adjustment in fees, I think, makes sense. But it is a great opportunity to revitalize some of the neighborhoods. I think it's worth pursuing.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank the individual from the private sector that came in here and told us to look into this.
Right.
We all told staff to do it. I think his name was Art Simonian?
Yeah, he was a big proponent of this. All right, do I have a motion to-
One. I think we've given the direction.
Never mind.
But there's a second.
There a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Axe, please.
No other items on this agenda.
Move to adjourn for council?
Second.
You are adjourned.
Adjourned for housing?
Second.
Housing's adjourned.
All right, what's next? Let's do the special public meeting of the Glendale Successor Agency. The special public-